of our community that have been lost. I'll give a quick testing blitz update. We had participated in the state of Arizona's Testing Blitz Challenge that runs over three Saturdays. Last Saturday, May 2nd, was the first event. We operated the King Street location as well as the Fort Tethill location. We tested a total of 287 people at that event. It only resulted in four positives, which was great news. We did receive an additional 25 positives of individuals that tested at other locations that belong to Coconino County. So that makes for a total of 29 positives that were found from that Saturday. Each of those individuals that tested, regardless of being positive or negative, everybody has been contacted already and given their test results. Thankful for the call center team, they were able to assist us in making all those return calls and notifications for individuals that were negative. And our disease investigation team, of course, contacted the individuals that were positive and initiated contact tracing. We will be participating in the Testing Blitz again this coming Saturday. The Testing Blitz this Saturday is only going to be at the King Street Health and Human Services location. We are going to be operating from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're going to operate both walk-up lines and driving lines. And the criteria for this event, many community members have asked, there is no criteria. Anybody is allowed to be tested. We do ask that people are patient, as we do anticipate there will be lines. But with having drive-through lines and walk-up lines and several swabs helping us take samples, we're hoping to get people moved through very quickly. We are asking community members that do present for specimen collection to please wear a mask. It is our number one priority to keep community members safe, as well as our healthcare workers. So please do, it doesn't have to be your traditional mask, just a face covering. It can be a scarf, bandana, but please do wear something. So, onto our call center update. I mentioned it briefly, and Madam Chair, as you and County Manager Jane know, we were the first in the state to stand up a call center along with our drive-through specimen collection sites. Our call center team has been phenomenal. Those hours have been reduced Monday through Friday, and however, they have been operating on the weekend to help support us through the Testing Blitz. To date, the call center has received well over 3,000 calls and have individually spoke with 3,000 and over 3,000 individuals. So really proud of our staff and appreciate their support for community members. Quick shelter testing updates and just additional partners. We continue to operate the Fort Tethill testing site Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And so, but we know that not everybody can get to the testing site. And so, we have diligently tried to go to our outlying areas. We've been to Fredonia, we've been to Tucson, Grand Canyon area, and to Williams. And we've been able to do this in support of having partners, such as Flagstaff Medical Center and North Country Health Center. And so, we greatly appreciate that. But we also realize that even just individuals that are located in Flagstaff, for whatever reason, may not always be able to get to the testing site. We have worked with our local congregate shelters. We're reaching out to our skilled nursing homes, nursing centers, as well as others to schedule testing times. A lot of that has already taken place. Flagstaff Shelter Services through partnerships with North Country has been able to hold testing events, which is terrific. Earlier in the week, county staff were able to collaborate a testing event with Sunshine Rescue Mission, and there are plans underway for Northland Family Help Center, Catholic Charities, as well as many others. So we're going to continue doing that as we try to reach different high-risk populations. And then, Madam Chair, Board members, we did receive the Abbott testing machine. We received it a few weeks ago. And as I had shared at that time, unfortunately, it only came with 24 specimen kits. So we got staff trained up. We did the webinars, and we're registered, and we've got staff using those. And I am pleased to share that we did receive an allotment of 150 additional testing kits at the end of last week. And then, we were told by the state that we could expect additional testing kits to arrive early next week. So in knowing that we're going to have some additional testing capacity, we have worked with all of our teams to really figure out how we can best deploy that machine. At this time, we're going to have that machine located at Fort Tethill. And we have used it a couple of times already to test our first responders and healthcare workers that have had an exposure. That way, they can know their results very quickly, within an hour, and then be back in the field if they're indeed negative. There are some limitations around using the Abbott machine. While it is a small machine, it is not easily transportable because of the required recalibration that goes along with moving it. So by having it at Fort Tethill, we can keep it on a cart, and we can roll it out when our healthcare workers or first responders report for testing. And so, they can go ahead and be swabbed, and then again, have those results in a fairly quick fashion. We had hoped that we could deploy it to some of our nursing centers and other places. But again, because of the restrictions and mobility, that just hasn't been as flexible as we would hope. Not to say we won't be able to work out some things in the future, but for now, the priority rule, and especially since we've seen the uptick in cases in Flagstaff, the priority has been with our first responders and healthcare workers. So that seems to be a good solution so far. And then I'll move into my Aspen Hotel update. Madam Chair, Board members, County Manager Jane, as you know, the board gave direction on Tuesday to exercise the 30-day notice and to extract from that hotel and those operations. And that was for a variety of reasons. We have been incredibly grateful for the partnership with that hotel property. It has really worked well. And for those watching that may not be familiar, we were the first in the state to set up those hotel operations for isolation and quarantine in effort to flatten the curve within our congregate settings and then within our jails. And so, it was really, it was helpful to be able to set it up. And we actually had it stood up when we had our first positive identified. However, we did not have a great influx of cases. And the census, while there has always been someone physically staying within the isolation and quarantine, there have been many days where the census has been incredibly low and under five. So that was one of the reasons that we were going to go ahead and exercise that notice, because the property was large. There's 123 rooms there. So the property was large. We were not seeing the volume to meet it. And then, of course, the cost. The cost of the hotel contract was fairly hefty, along with all the biohazard, cleaning, security, and other costs that go along with that. So those were the conversations that took place, which led to the board's guidance to staff to exercise the 30-day notice. Since then, again, the landscape has changed incredibly. We have seen the spike in the Flagstaff cases. And Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and try to show that on my screen. You give me one second. Well, Madam Chair, I'm not having much luck showing my screen, I don't believe. I'm going to try one more time. If not, I will move on.
No problem. Dr. Peoples, I wonder if maybe Eric can help bring it forward so that you can continue if you'd like. Maybe we can help with the technology.
Yes, thank you. I apologize. It was seamless last time, but...
Oh, no, it worked great last time, yes.
I don't suppose you can see that?
Dr. Peoples, we can see that. You are sharing to the attendees.
Great.
Okay, look at that. Surprise.
I'll start the slideshow.
Okay, I'm just going to show the one slide in the interest of time. So really, what you see here is the spike in cases. The yellow line is our tribal communities that goes up, if you're able to follow my cursor. And so, they've actually seen the decline so far with this past week, which is terrific news. It's still way too many cases, and it's still incredibly concerning, but any decline is good news. Page area is this lighter green bar, tracing it. And so, you know, it's declined a little bit, but unfortunately, we're seeing it go back up. The really alarming spike is this darker green line for Flagstaff that you can see has been pretty flat, as I shared. We're having an average of 12 cases. But then, it has creeped up astoundingly. And so, you can see that drastic spike. And this isn't expected to stop for the next couple of weeks, or perhaps even longer, which really brings us to what some of the changing landscape that we've experienced with the hotel isolation quarters. Let me now stop sharing my screen. Or leave it up. I don't know. Let's see. One second. Did it go away?
I ended it for you, Dr. Peoples.
Wish you would have done that 10 seconds sooner. Thank you. Okay, so I'll move forward. But so, Madam Chair and community members, you can see that there's been quite a bit of an increase. And so, that gets, again, as I've already said a couple of times, the changing landscape. Part of the other additional changes that have occurred is that we've seen a spike of positive cases within our sheltered community. And so, that's our community members that are most vulnerable and housing insecure. So, and a lot of that is what prompted the adjutant general visits that we were able to have earlier in the week. And so, we're really, or yesterday, we were really pleased to have him and several members of the DEMA team join us. And so, Chair Archuleta, if you would want to go ahead and share then, and perhaps introduce our partners and give your perspectives?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Dr. Peoples. And I would, Eric, would you please also make sure that we have Dr. Nolan, Dr. Mujin, and Ms. Altimbaugh, and Mayor Evans, if you would please unmute them so that they can be speakers? Thank you.
I don't know if I can see Mayor Evans.
Okay, I know that she is on, so I can communicate with her and ask her...
She just raises her hand. I'll be happy to put her in.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yes, so thank you very much, Dr. Peoples. I had the opportunity, as well as Supervisor Ryan and Mayor Evans, we invited her, as well as City Manager Greg Clifton. And then, of course, our county manager and our deputy county managers joined as well during the day, at different points during the day, to meet with the General McGuire and the Colonel that accompanied him, as well as the DEMA Director. And we were able to meet on-site at Hotel Aspen. We were able to give him, when he met with us at the EOC, a full briefing of Hotel Aspen and communicate the use of Hotel Aspen, the need that we continue to have for a hotel like Hotel Aspen in our county and Flagstaff community. There was much discussion about the most recent numbers of our housing insecure population being COVID-positive. And it was alarming to him, and he was very supportive of the fact that we do have the hotel. He recognized the county for being the first in the state to stand up a hotel of this type. And then, of course, FEMA County following Coconino County. So he had wonderful compliments for the county. And he also said that this is an ideal facility. It is exactly what FEMA is asking for when they do look at hotels, and that is for COVID, and to have doors that exit and enter outside, to have venting systems to the outside. So he was very, very complimentary. We did indicate the fact that the county does have a cash flow issue in terms of being engaged in a lease of a property of this type, that it is very expensive. And in speaking about that as well, we talked about the fact that we are very uncomfortable with the uncertainty of reimbursement from FEMA or from the state, or wherever we can get the reimbursement from. There hasn't been really a commitment of reimbursement. And even if we were to have a commitment of reimbursement, how, we know from our experience, the reimbursement usually comes a year later, sometimes even three years later. We spoke about the partnership with the city of Flagstaff, and how positive that partnership is. And the mayor can speak to what she spoke about, but she was, told him very clearly that the facility of this type is definitely needed in Flagstaff, and spoke to and advocated for the facility as well. I'll turn it over to Supervisor Ryan to communicate his discussions with the general when we had a meeting with him at the Emergency Operations Center. He took a tour of the facility, and that's where he met with our county manager Jane, as well as Deputy County Manager Dr. Peoples, and Deputy County Manager Joanne Keane, and then Supervisor Ryan was there as well, as well as Ms. Muslin. And so, we had a great showing of the county, a very thorough briefing with him. And what he did communicate was that the, he's confident that the state can, will provide 75% reimbursement. He also indicated that there is an emergency request for reimbursement, where the county does not have to wait for the reimbursement. It can happen immediately. He told us exactly which form to use and how to make that request. And I believe that our staff is already on that and is submitting that request, if they have not already submitted. So we got on that immediately, and I'm sure Dr. Peoples can inform us of that. So that is comforting to know that there is 75%. And then, he committed to work on the other 25% expenses. They do have to be for the 25%. They have to be combed through, just to make sure all of the, those expenses are directly related to the hotel and to the effort. But he also indicated that he felt like he would be able to assist us with getting the additional 25%. And I know that Deputy County Manager Keane has also been working on that this morning. So I would like to turn it over to Supervisor Ryan, and then I'd like to call on Mayor Evans as well, who has joined us. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just quickly, along this line, I think a collective memory would be helpful also with Joanne Keane and Dr. Marie Peoples. Were primaries in there. Others floated in and out of the meeting. But it was a really good time to express our concern about the cost, as you had mentioned. The general was very supportive, especially if you take a look at the spike that we have. And it was helpful that we can, you know, we understand a mechanism and a route that we can pursue expedited recovery of cost, at least for that 75%. We did get into other support measures needed, either more broadly in the community and/or needed for the facility. It's that extra 25% that we need to focus on. There were some discussions of potentially tapping state CDPG funding that we may be able to potentially pursue for that recovery of the 25%. There's more information we have to pursue related to that, but that was new. As far as the broader support, Dr. Peoples can speak to some of the opportunity of support for testing supplies. He, we were in and out of different topics. The discussion related to Walgreens has transitioned in our community of the need for skilled nursing. Their discussion was more related to the Walgreens facility, and looking at that as an acute care unit that currently, there is not a need here. However, they did explore the use of that facility, have prepped it so that it can be mothballed, at least the intent of how they would use the facility, if the need would be there. And so, they have it on their back shelf, as if we have growing cases throughout the state and/or in the region, they can always activate the use of the Walgreens facility. Skilled nursing piece was more of, you know, he wouldn't speak against the concept, but you know, that would be more of, if we wanted to approach it from a regional level. Of course, you know, the whole piece comes back to tracking funding, putting in your recording of how you go about this, and then seeing how you might fit into the funding support associated with that. We did get into need for, you know, the ancillary costs related to whether it's testing, or it's associated with the, you know, the PPE support. I think Marie could speak a lot better to what they're trying to do at the state level. You know, if anybody wants to manufacture at the state level, they have a couple of different mechanisms that they have access to gowns that can be rewashed. They might not be the primary, but could be support pieces, but how they might add that to the chain of what's happening with this. Let's see. Lot of focus. Their primary objective right now is focus, A, on Navajo County, Apache County, B, Coconino County, where a tiered effect, especially with the support from the hospital, and how patients are handled associated with that. Their focus, the state is focused on congested living, and a great example of this outbreak that we've had more recently with our homeless shelter, and how to focus on these type of facilities and really see if we have the appropriate support that can be handled associated with them. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something, and/or Marie or Joanne can add to additional conversations associated with that. But that gives you a general layout of a lot of the conversation that we had had.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Peoples, do you want to just follow up pretty quickly on the request for the reimbursement? I know that in speaking with Mr. Cox, Anthony Cox, the Director of DEMA, I know that that was something that we told them was going to be done here in very short order. So if you want to give us an update on that?
Absolutely will. Thank you, Chair Archuleta. And just to recap on what Supervisor Ryan said, and you both captured it well. They were very impressed with the isolation and quarantine quarters that we had. And what they really impressed upon us was to use this system that they're rolling out on Monday. It's a fast-paced system, but they really, they understood the cash flow situation and wanted to assist how best they could, and did not want it to be shuttered based on cash flow. So that was really reassuring. So we did submit all of our materials. They were submitted this morning to that fast-paced system. And I'm not sure if there's a better terminology, but that's what it's been referred to. And so, the reviews of those submissions will start on Monday, and we hope that we will receive a response within one to two weeks at the latest. But it has all been submitted.
Great. Well, thank you. Mayor Evans, I wanted to call on you, because really want to thank you for being at the meeting in the morning at Hotel Aspen, and also City Manager Clifton, and wanted you to give your perspective, if you could.
Definitely. First of all, thank you, Chairwoman Archuleta, and the rest of the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to be a part of this meeting regarding Aspen Hotel. Chairwoman Archuleta, I was grateful to have been included in the conversation with the general yesterday, there at the site, myself and City Manager Clifton. At that particular time, as you know, I spoke with him very specifically about the fact that cases were raising, or on the increase here in the city that I represent, and that I am very worried about the safety, the life safety and health of the people that live in my city. The Coconino County Board of Supervisors has the public health jurisdiction here in, for the state, or the state has assigned you that role here in Coconino County. And I had asked him very clearly about the issue that I saw that was happening in our shelter, very specifically Flagstaff Shelter Services, because of the fact that it's a group type of a shelter, and the fact that they had 18 individuals test positive there. And I thought that that was very problematic. And he agreed. He looked at me and told me, he goes, "You have an issue here in your city, and it needs to be dealt with quickly before you see even more increases." At that particular time, I asked you, as the Chair of the Coconino County Board, as well as a Chair of the Coconino County Public Health District, to temporarily close that group shelter and to relocate those individuals to the Hotel Aspen. The general thought that that was the best idea and the best solution to handle this outbreak, this hotspot that we have seen. He was very clear that having individuals in separate rooms with outside ventilation and running water would be the best way for us to stop the spread of COVID-19 here in my city. And so, I asked you, because you have the jurisdiction in which to do that. One of the things that you said at that particular time was that cost was the reason why the Board of Supervisors had decided to close the facility. The general's response to that was that cost should not be the determining factor when it comes to public health and public safety. At that particular time, we entered into the conversation about the fact that they could offer the 75% reimbursement instantly, with the other 25% coming from a vetting of the receipts that you all would turn in. At that time, our city manager said that we have staff at the city who would be more than willing to help with any reimbursement package you all need to submit, to make sure that that is submitted quickly. Then there was the conversation about the other 25%, because definitely, we would like to make sure that the county is made whole. At that time, you and I talked about, we could call directly instead of a meeting with the Governor, with Mr. Ben Link. The Governor does have monies that were sent by the federal government to the state of Arizona to help with cases like this. It has been suggested by at least one of our senators that that money, the money that the Governor has, be spent to match the 25% reimbursement from FEMA. Additionally, there's been money set aside by the state representatives in the Arizona budget as well, that has not necessarily been tapped. And so, I made the commitment to work with you to make sure that the county be made whole. We also know that the city of Flagstaff is expecting to get specific COVID dollars through the CBG process that is specific to housing. While I'm not sure how those monies will be allocated, and those monies have not come yet before the Flagstaff City Council, definitely, this is something that the Flagstaff City Council should be made aware of, and perhaps there is something we can do there. I cannot make the commitment, because again, the entire council has the lay-in on it. But we thought that was important. Also, part of the conversation at the time, because I know that I was making a very serious ask, it was not one that I made on a whim. You know, our Flagstaff Shelter Services has done an amazing job in making sure that people are housed and safe and have a place to be. We had the opportunity to reallocate dollars, and they have opened up two additional motels here in town. Those motels are COVID-free. The individuals there are actually sheltering in place with intention. They have active programming. They have hot food being delivered, and they have some great community that is being built in these hotels. I can also tell you, that three of the individuals that were housed in this temporary model have also gained permanent housing outside in our community, in their own apartments. So I think that this would be an excellent opportunity to have the Coconino County Public Health District work directly with Flagstaff Shelter Services. It would be my intention that the individuals that would be moved from this facility to this new sort of facility for the time being, have Flagstaff Shelter Services still provide the programming or provide the oversight of those particular clients. And so, again, I want to say that the general was very clear that we have a problem. He said that the best way to minimize and reduce that issue was through the utilization of Aspen Hotel. He was very impressed with the facility. Dr. Peoples, your wisdom in opening such a facility, when you did, is very commendable. And it looks like it is very much needed at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. And now, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Nolan to provide perspective. And then, after her, Ms. Altimbaugh, and then after her, please... her, Ms. Altenbaugh, and then after her, please, Dr. Mujin. And we'll just take you off of mute. Let's see if we can do that, or if you can try it, Dr. Nuland. Almost, there you go, one more time, there you go.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much Chair Archuleta, and thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors and other community members for allowing me to speak a little bit. As many of you know, well, some of you don't know me, so let me just make a brief introduction. So I'm a medical doctor. I started my career actually at the Canyenter Health Center up in Canyenter, Arizona. So the eruption of COVID-19 is particularly personal for me because Chiltimato is just 27 miles down the road, and that community was my community for many years, and I still, unfortunately, I'm getting updates of who's sick and who has passed with this horrible, horrible condition. I completed my Master in Public Health at Harvard University as a Commonwealth Fund Fellow in Minority Health Policy, and that just reflects my longstanding commitment to underserved communities and making sure that we reduce health disparities. I've been working for North Country since 2013 and have been their CEO since the end of 2015. My involvement with the shelter is professionally as a service provider. We provide primary care services, behavioral health services, and pharmacy services for clients at Flagstaff Shelter. We've done that for years, and I'm also serving currently as the Board President for Flagstaff Shelter Services. So when the decision was made to give notice to Hotel Aspen, I have convened a small group, just a holding environment of a small handful of professionals from the hospital, the city, the county, Flag Shelter, and North Country to discuss the problem of making sure those who are unsheltered are sheltered in a way that best protects our community. We have the challenge of folks who are medically vulnerable. I think Ross has done an amazing job of setting up Hotel One and Hotel Two for the most medically vulnerable folks at the shelter, at least those who would agree to stay there, and North Country has been able to offer primary care services, and they're participating in the Front Door Program as Mayor Evans pointed out, meaning that three of the group have been housed since the program started about three weeks ago. We started, North Country did screening at the medically vulnerable shelter first, and only one individual ended up being positive for COVID-19. We were able to transfer that individual to Hotel Aspen for further support, and also that allowed us to maintain COVID-negative sheltering environments as well as the COVID-positive sheltering environment at Hotel Aspen. Once we had worked out the system to adequately screen folks at Hotel One and Hotel Two, we conducted screening at Flag Shelter Services, and Ross enticed a number of folks to participate. Those of you who haven't had the nasopharyngeal swab may not know how truly uncomfortable that test is, and for individuals who have serious mental illness in combination with addiction and other profound personal challenges, including trauma and abuse, just going through that test can be immensely triggering. And I was really gratified that so many members of the Flagstaff Shelter Services clientele and their staff participated in testing, and Bridget Wicks, the nurse practitioner who offers services there, told me that many people thanked her. You know, they recoiled when they had the nasopharyngeal swab administered, but then were thankful that they were getting screened because somebody cared about that community. I know that there's discussions about shifting the population that's currently at Flag Shelter to another environment, at least temporarily. That's something that this holding group has discussed, and there were a number of ideas shared as to how to do a deep cleaning of the shelter, what would be an appropriate interval, what are other measures we could put in place to assure that any population that does end up staying at the shelter can do so safely and securely. I know Ross can give a lot more of the practical details there, because there's numerous challenges to managing the folks experiencing homelessness, making sure that they're sheltered in our community, and to limit the potential spread of COVID-19. I'll pause there in case there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Nuland. Are there any questions of Dr. Nuland at this time? You just need to unmute, and I do want to say that Supervisor Parks is on the line. He's been on the line for quite some time now, but this is the first opportunity I've had to mention that. Okay, so not at this time, Dr. Nuland, but you'll be able to stay on with us?
Yes, I'll stay on. I'll just go off video.
Okay, super, thank you. Okay. Ms. Altenbaugh, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon, and we would love to hear your perspective, please, and bring all of your experience to bear in this conversation.
Sure. Chairwoman Archuleta, Board of Supervisors, members of the boards, Mayor Evans, I'm grateful to be here in company with you today. As we've talked about, there was a, after some surveillance testing was done on Monday at Flagstaff Shelter Services, we saw about a 30% positive response, positive cases come back. Those folks were immediately moved to Hotel Aspen, but you know, I can't say I was surprised. I can say I am deeply, deeply disappointed. Two of our staff members were part of those numbers, and you know, the folks that we know to have tested positive are people that I, as you know, many of our team care deeply about, and I'm sure all of you do too. So I also know that we tested them on Monday, and it wasn't until Wednesday that they were, began to move over to Hotel Aspen. So clearly, there was a mix of people that came back negative as well as positive. I can tell you that as it stands right now at Flagstaff Shelter Services, we're seeing about 70 people a night still. We are able to achieve six feet of distance because of, because we moved so many people over to these two motels. Everyone that we moved was either deemed medically vulnerable or of a certain age and is vulnerable because of that age. So that was not a decision made by myself. My, one of my Director of Operations, our Front Door Specialist and Bridget Wicks, who's with North Country and has been co-locating her services through North Country for years now, so she has a very solid understanding of many of the medical issues that our clients face. And so those three people are the people that have been making, have been making the decision on who goes to the sort of COVID-free vulnerable motels. And so, you know, I was grateful that when we got the test results back, so many, so many of those people were negative. You know, beyond that, I think I'm mostly here probably to answer your questions about what we're seeing. Each person that comes in to the shelter, right off the bat, before they even walk through the gates, their temperature is taken. They are asked a number of questions about any possible symptoms, and you know, if they have been near, you know, anything that we know, like we have conversations with other service providers, hey, this person tested positive, they're not staying with us, if they come to you, we know they're positive, that sort of thing, that sort of conversation is happening. We, as soon as they come in after they've answered those questions, they're required to wash their hands at a handwashing station at the front gate, and then when they come in, in any kind of line fashion that we have going on, we have marked where they need to stand six feet apart. Everybody's given a mask and gloves. All staff are required to wear masks and gloves during their shift, and all the beds are six feet apart. I say all of that only to say that I think we are probably doing the best job that we can do without, without having people in their own rooms and their own bathrooms. I mean, there's no way around that. Our goal from the beginning of starting this motelling process, you know, about a month ago, was to get as many people out as possible. So that's obviously not done, but it's also, you know, a matter of logistics and money and, you know, whether or not we have somewhere to put folks. So with that, I probably would be better suited to answer questions of what I missed and what you're thinking. So I'll stop.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Altenbaugh?
This is Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Fowler.
Are we, are we seeing an increase of number of people that are coming in? Are these new people or are they the same people cycling around or how do you say, returning the same ones that are usually the homeless here? Are they new ones that are coming in from elsewhere?
Thank you for that question Supervisor Fowler. I think it's a mixture of both. We see, every day, we see a consistent number of people that we know that have been with us for, you know, whether it's a few nights or in some cases, a few years, depending on who the folks are. So it's a healthy mix, I would say, or maybe not healthy, but it's a mix. We have seen a significant increase in people coming from the Navajo Nation. I would say we're looking at somewhere between 16 and 20% on a daily basis of folks that are new to the area, not new to the area, but new to Flagstaff, so certainly still Coconino County residents, but new to our shelter system. We have seen some influx coming up from Phoenix, but we're really, really encouraging people that are coming from areas or if they call wanting to know about services, that kind of thing, we are absolutely encouraging people to stay where they are, certainly if they're in situations where it's not safe, where there's not resources, we are taking them, but we really are in a place where we are actively saying, this is not, this is not the safest place you can be. If you have somewhere else to go, you should go there. We've definitely seen an increase in people coming looking for hotel rooms, and so we have, that's why we have such strict criteria on how, who goes first essentially to hotel rooms, because you know, there are people that would come and would not be willing to stay in the shelter and maybe have somewhere else to go, but would like to see if they can get a hotel room. So there's been some of that too, so it's a mix.
Yes, Supervisor Babbitt?
Yeah, great. So, yeah, so really appreciate Ann and Ross, you participating and chair in the operational side of things, and certainly, as we've recognized on a variety of occasions, the really important work the mayor and council did on the CDBG allocation for kind of the relief valve from the shelter, which is just, you know, it's been really important, and I think that bore out in the testing, where it's one out of 75 tested positive versus a much higher proportion. I actually thought it was higher than 30% test positive at the shelter, but I'm not trying to insinuate that is not a high number. So I had a question for Ann and Ross on the notion, on the idea of moving people into the hotels that are shared space from positive quarantine folks and non-positive shelter relief folks is what I'm hearing there's this discussion on. I'm just wondering how you would operationalize that? So how do you, yes, they're in individual rooms, which is a huge step forward, but what are the issues with taking, and does this have impacts for reimbursement of taking congregate care facilities and mixing them with a quarantine medical referral facility?
Well, Dr. Nuland can probably speak to some of the nuance medically. I can tell you that part of the reason why we are having success at Motel One and Motel Two with keeping people in place is because we are allowing them, once they've been tested, to communicate. And so if you go over there, like right now, if you went over there, you would see that multiple people are sitting around picnic tables outside in the parking lot and playing cards and, you know, listening to music and talking, and it's staff, so it's managed appropriately, but it's not something that, you know, people that, you know, that have, you know, in some cases, significant mental illness, that have formed friendships with other people. I mean, we have people over there that are in chemotherapy and on dialysis and things that are emotionally very difficult to be going through. And so I, my challenge with thinking through having people go to Hotel Aspen, one of the challenges, and not suggesting that we shouldn't work through it, but is whether or not we're going to add people that are testing negative or asymptomatic in place when, if they can't have those connections.
Okay, that helps. Ann, do you have a, can you help me with how you kind of make sure there's reasonable opportunities, because they're very different? Yeah, you don't want lots of, I think, mixing between those two in a quarantine situation. Just interested in how you operationalize it.
Yeah, you know, I think, and Dr. Mujin may have something to add on this too, but maintaining physically separate sites is optimal. You know, the whole concept of a quarantine, and I would say we've all experienced social isolation or social distancing, and the term I'm trying to use is physical distancing, because people still need that social connection, but when you have individuals that are under quarantine, what we need in place to really safeguard their physical distancing is far more extreme than we would have for the medically vulnerable currently at Hotel One and Hotel Two. You know, Bridget Wicks made the comment to me that we should do a sociological study on what's happening to the folks that are staying at Hotel One and Hotel Two, because they're building community and connection in a different way that's really quite powerful and that's sustaining for them when they don't have some of the other freedoms that we would like to enjoy.
And why don't I call on Dr. Mujin too, because I think that would be important to provide.
And could I just, before we, Madam Chair, just, just because it's my understanding that those who are in quarantine, I mean, they still come and go because they are not in a, it would be helpful for maybe Marie to paint the picture of what's happening with folks who are in the isolation and quarantine now, and how, you know, how contained or not contained, or how that social interaction plays out as well. Thanks, Madam Chair, and I'll let Dr. Mujin weigh in. Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Peoples, and then we'll ask Dr. Mujin.
Yes, thank you so much, and Dr. Nuland is absolutely correct. The social connections throughout this very difficult time are incredibly important. To Supervisor Babbitt's question, so no one is restrained from being able to move about, so yes, if people need to, although they are in isolation and quarantine, we are not restricting that. What we're doing is providing education and PPE, masks and gloves as they do. we are not restricting that. What we're doing is providing education and PPE, masks and gloves as they do that. That has really been pretty minimal though, as we have our patient support team that is helping people with whatever their individual needs may be. However, movement is not restricted. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Mujin. Thank you for joining us and we would appreciate your perspective.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair Archuleta, and Board of Supervisors for allowing me to be part of this conversation. Because the others going before me have done such a good job of sharing the issues. I'll, I'll try to be brief and, and just lend a perspective from Northern Arizona healthcare. And, and for those of you that don't know me, I'm a practicing internal medicine doc. I've been in Flagstaff practicing for 23 years and held a variety of leadership positions at NEH, currently serving as our Chief Quality Officer and leading our COVID response team. So I, I think this, what this really illustrates is the challenges that conjugate settings really create as far as the shelter. I, I, this is really what's been keeping me up at night, I think, the last couple of months. And not only for the shelter, but our skilled nursing facilities, the detention centers, our rehab, all have this potential to, to have outbreaks of, of COVID-19. And, and what I've worked with, with the skilled nursing and rehab is a similar thing to what we're, we're doing with Aspen Hotel. They need somewhere isolated physically, you know, single rooms, single bathrooms and isolated from the rest of the population to be able to either convalesce from COVID-19 or if they're on the front end being tested for, for COVID-19. So I, I think having that design is, is critical in, in reducing the risk to the other residents. And, and with our homeless population, I think certainly first and foremost is protecting our, our community as well as the other residents of the shelter while they're being worked up or for COVID-19 or feeling ill. Secondarily, I think it really does provide a humane recovery location for homeless stricken by COVID. This disease, even if you aren't sick enough to end up in the hospital, it, it certainly makes you ill and, and having shelter, their own bathroom, single rooms for not only the infectious reasons, but, but just some sense of having a humane place to recover, I think is, is critical. The other things that I guess I, I would add on to what the others have, have contributed is I, I think Northern Arizona healthcare really does want to be a collaborative partner in whatever solution we decide on going forward. And whether that's helping with cleaning of the shelter itself or, or other ways that we can contribute, whether that's some kind of funding to help reduce cash flow problems, although it looks like there's been some progress in, in relieving that. I, I, I just want to remain part of this conversation because we really do feel like it, it is a critical part of the response and, and I would echo everybody else in thanking the county for setting up Hotel Aspen quickly. When this got set up, you know, we were in the midst of figuring everything out that we needed to do to deliver care to our community. And, and having that solution available for our emergency room was, was critical at that time. We weren't sure what kind of volumes we were going to see in the emergency room. It ended up being our ICU that got hit harder than, than the emergency room, but it was, it was really critical to be able to have that resource, especially when we were struggling to have enough personal protective equipment for frontline and staff. We certainly did not want to have to admit every single patient that needed to work up for COVID and, and that really helped with that population. So the, the other thing that I think it is critical and, and Dr. Newland addressed this is that having a physically different location to place these patients is critical because if, number one, if we can do that, it keeps them physically separate from the sheltered community. I worry if we don't have a humane and, or another option for these patients that they may try to get back into the shelter or may not be as forthcoming about that they're being tested or being worked up or, or even forthcoming about their symptoms. As, as we know, while fevers can be a way of screening people, if they take Tylenol or Ibuprofen or something, certainly that, that fever can be suppressed. So with that, I'll make myself available for other questions as well.
Thank you. Are there questions for Dr. Mujin?
Just, if I may, Madam Chair, Matt Ryan. The, a, a piece of the discussion is, you know, how, how do we keep this, this opportunity available? And, and in this, while they're not a, pieces of the worst discussion, there are implications associated with it. And it would be, you know, I appreciate the discussion around if it's not a direct assist associated with this, some of the ancillary costs that we're picking up, that, that may be an area that can help us with our discussions of how we, how we approach this into the future to assure that we have the potential of standing this up and, you know, come up with a, a way of resolving some of our challenges that we have right now.
So I know that Mayor Evans has a question and then I also know that Ms. Altenbaugh has not finished. And so I want to make sure that she has a chance to finish as well, which I think will probably then provoke even more questions. So, but go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I, I gotta, I had a couple of questions or maybe their thoughts. I'm not sure. I'll just go through them real quick. First of all, with regards, regarding Hotel Aspen, I was under the impression that there are currently people staying there that are not COVID positive. They are the individuals who the security guards, I believe there's like two individuals that are working that work there at the facility. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is it seems as if the facility is big enough that you can actually put people in different areas or different areas can be used for different types of clientele. I wanted to better understand how people being asymptomatic plays into some of this discussion. And then I really wanted to go back to one of the points that I made earlier, just to make sure that it's reiterated. It's my understanding that the Coconino County Board of Supervisors is acting as the public health authority, the public health district. And as such, you have jurisdiction over public health. Currently, right now in Flagstaff, we have an issue. And one of the issues that we have is that the way people are being sheltered in the group sheltering, other group shelters is not working per se, as we see the 18 individuals, including two people that work with the population now have COVID. I believe that I heard Ross say that they are doing everything that they possibly can, short of having individuals in separate rooms. And I believe the doctor from the hospital, as well as the other doctor from North Country, Dr. Newland basically said the same thing. So if Hotel Aspen, for some reason or another, is not going to be the facility that is used, I go back and I say, there needs to be something done about the current group shelter and how those individuals are, how those individuals are sheltered, at least during this hot, what is it, at least during this increase that we are experiencing with COVID-19 here in the city. And I'm saying that as the mayor of the city of Flagstaff, I have grave concerns about public health in the city at this particular time, understanding that the numbers are rising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Marie, would you go ahead and answer the questions about the Hotel Aspen?
I'd be happy to Chair Archuleta. And Mayor Evans, I was trying to take notes, but if I miss something, please let me know and I will get you an answer. So there are additions, so there are 123 beds at Hotel Aspen. And yes, we have 24-hour security there and they work in different shifts. And some of them are not local to flag, or if they are local to flag, they also have, are concerned about exposing their families to COVID. And so that we do have some security that are staying within those 123 rooms. So that is correct. We also have guests or patients there that are not COVID positive. So our federal allowances allow us to have people at the isolation and quarantine that are either COVID positive that are unsheltered or housing insecure that are COVID positive or housing insecure and undergoing testing for COVID. So in the average day is 6.9 days that for whatever reason it may take for someone to find out their test results. So we have those two populations. And then most recently FEMA has opened up the guidance to allow us to be able to shelter people there that are 65 and older, that are just medically insecure. And so they may or may not have COVID. So there are a few different populations that we do have staying there. However, all 123 rooms will never be used at one time. And that is because we're following the CDC guidance. So after someone exits a room that has been COVID positive and we're seeing an increase in the COVID, COVID positive stays is what has prompted this entire discussion. But after someone is released from being in one of the rooms, we have to do the biohazard cleaning. And then that room has to sit or burn, if you will, for three days before we can fill that room again. So because of that, there will not be a time when all 123 rooms are there. So I hope that gives some clarity to that. And then I,
I want to follow up with something. Definitely what you just said, I appreciate it. I've heard that several times. The general was pretty clear when we were talking to the general, I guess it was yesterday, that changes to operations, for example, a shelter that is normally a group shelter, having a outbreak and having to redo their model to shelter people in a different way is a covered expense. That is what the general said. Liz? Because we asked him point blank about that and about the cost of it.
So it is a covered expense, Mayor. What we have not been able to get clarity on, and the general's visit helped us with a lot of clarity that we had not been able to receive from DEMA or FEMA. And we'd been told that our operations were covered, but we had not until yesterday heard a percentage. That was the first time we had heard the 75%. And as I was asking him questions, and you and I were in different meetings, so you didn't get to hear some of my questions. And but what I was asking as well is because what we had been told before from DEMA is that only the rooms that were occupied were coverable, which meant we still had that huge expense, of course, for the entire property. What we were advised to do yesterday was to submit all expenses regardless of you, room utilization. And so that's what we're waiting to hear back from, from our, our fast pay request that we submitted this morning. So some of that is still unknown.
And I was talking about the different types of clients though, because we had a very specific conversation with him about the different types of clients, whether or not they were COVID positive, not COVID positive, over a certain age, under a certain age, all clients that would normally be in a group shelter type of situation that because that shelter had an outbreak and those individuals could no longer be there because of safety, because of public safety risk. If the model for that shelter had to be changed to one that was a hotel type of a model with the individual rooms, would that be covered? And the general said, yes, that would be covered because it's a change in operations.
I agree. Thank you, Mayor. That was information that the general shared with us, which again is why we are having this conversation and reviewing the direction of what to do with the isolation and quarantine operations. And I also wanted to comment, I heard you loud and clear about your public health concerns and I, I echo that. There are many public health concerns, which is what the EOC is primarily focused on and has tried to do. And we can get legal opinion, but when I was reviewing and we had some conversations about it early this morning, I do not believe that that authority lies with the county. I believe that authority in terms of closing and shuttering shelters lies with the cities.
It doesn't lie with the city because of the way the governor has done his EO, his executive order. The governor has taken and done a preemption on all cities and towns. And within that executive order, he has been clear that he is working with the public health authorities. So you might want to have your attorney check that, but that is the information I've received from our attorney.
Thank you. We'll continue seeking clarification. Hopefully we'll have some by the, the end of this meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, and I also know that Rose Winkler, our attorney, is also on the line. And then I also wanted to provide the opportunity for, also for Ms. Keen, Juan Keen, our deputy county manager to weigh in and also on funding. And so, Ms. Keen, do you want to weigh in on that?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and community members, Mayor Evans. I appreciate the opportunity. I don't have a lot to add, but I, I will say that as Dr. Peoples mentioned, we did receive a lot of clarity yesterday on reimbursable expenses. And, you know, General McGuire was very clear that he was planning on working with the county to expedite funding to the county 75% of the full cost. And I think that's the key word we, we heard yesterday from the general. Those were submitted this morning. It, it's through the express pay portal. And actually, from what we're hearing, there, there will be an announcement on Monday that this opportunity will be available to other counties as well, to other jurisdictions. The, the key to this is, as Supervisor Archuleta mentioned, it typically takes a while for counties to receive reimbursements. So this provides a fund that will immediately get that funding to front the money to the county until the federal funds come to likely back to the state. The other question was the 25% required local cost share. And we are working on options to, to get that covered. There's been quite a few discussions. I know the governor's office is very focused on, on helping jurisdictions with covering this cost. And we have reached out to the governor's office directly, letting them know that we've submitted our expenses to, for, for Hotel Aspen specifically, to DEMA and that we're looking forward to working with them on this 25%. So we've done everything we can on the local level. And I think that the news we heard was very optimistic yesterday from General McGuire. I won't add much more, but just that he did make some pretty strong comments about his concerns about shutting down the facility. And that, you know, if, if there were concerns with funding, that he wants to just make sure that, that is not an issue from the state level and from a public health perspective, he supports what we're doing. So I just wanted to relay that information, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. And I just, I just want to make sure that it's clear in terms of the action steps that the county has taken since the general arrived yesterday and since we got clarity from Mr. Cox, Director Cox of DEMA. And so, and also since Mayor, since you and I spoke about the, the alarming increase of COVID positive people at our housing insecure homeless shelter. And so immediately, I mean, we, the county did gather, we did speak to Rose Winkler, our county attorney. We immediately submitted the forms, as you, as you've heard, for reimbursement. We began to look at our capacity at Hotel Aspen to see if it was an option to be able to move people into the shelter. We've, obviously the, the management team has been working. And then it was so timely that yesterday Dr. Newland had convened a call with the small group of people that she had mentioned. And then today there was a commitment for a follow-up meeting at noon today. And I think the, the discussion, as I understand it, and I would invite anyone who was part of that meeting to, because I was not part of that meeting, but it was a small group of mainly the, the managers. The discussion is, you know, how can we assist Flagstaff Shelter Services, knowing that there was a, there was an increase of people who were COVID positive? Is it prudent to assist by moving out of a congregate setting into a hotel setting? And could the resource that the county has procured, Hotel Aspen, be valuable? And could the resource that the county has procured, Hotel Aspen, be valuable in this regard, be useful in this regard? I certainly, we certainly know that the City of Flagstaff, the mayor, asked us to proceed as the public health authority in closing the shelter. It has been determined, and I will let Rose speak about that today, that that is, that is not something within our purview. And so I would like Rose to speak to that. And I also see that Supervisor Babbitt has a comment. And so, Rose, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to go and then call on Supervisor Babbitt.
Thank you, Chair Archuleta. I've attempted to review the statutes and I've gone through what I can, which I think is fairly exhaustive. I don't find any authority for the county acting as the public health authority to shut a a private entity or private facility down. For the most part, when it comes to public health control, the public health authority, the authority is to isolate and quarantine individuals. It is not to shut down a particular business or facility. That is more consistent with where where there are facilities that are, you know, outright violating, violating the health code. But in this particular situation, in a public health situation like this, the the remedy and the authority that the that the Health District has is to isolate and quarantine, set up a facility the way the county has with Hotel Aspen. And if necessary, to to get court orders to isolate and quarantine individuals. As Mayor Evans referenced, the governor's executive order, I think to the extent that it limits the city's authority under the emergency statutes, it does the same to the county when the county itself is acting under its own emergency. So I have yet to find any authority for the Public Health District to order the the shutting of businesses. And I cannot, you know, I don't know that there's much left for me to review. Certainly, if the if the state believes we have the authority, I'd be happy to review anything that they can provide to me asserting that. But I cannot find that and I don't see that as the situation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll go to Supervisor Babbitt. And then I do want to get back to Ms. Alton Ball, because I think it's really important to find out from her what is, what are her needs. And so Supervisor Babbitt?
I'll wait till Ross finishes. That sounds fine.
Okay, great. Yes, so.
Hi, Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Parks, I'm going to get you in just a minute. I want to get, if you don't mind, Ms. Alton Ball to finish, because we, we started having a lot of questions during her, her comments. And I want to just get back to her, if you don't mind, to finish out her, her perspective. And then we'll open up to the board again for comments.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I would say that one of the, so the last, the last two days, like you mentioned, we had these smaller calls with Dr. Nuland and the county and the hospital and the city. And I think one of the things that we sort of came to was that we want to move people regardless. So, you know, I don't know that there needs to be a fight in terms of, and not that this is a fight, but that there needs to be too much conversation around whose jurisdiction it is to say, maybe this facility, should it be operating in this way right now? I think it's more of a matter of technically how we get that done. Just from my perspective and my brief history of managing hotels that I've added to my resume, me and Marie both, I can say that the rate that you are getting at Hotel Aspen is a good one. It's comparable to what we are, we're using at, in fact, it's cheaper than what we're using Motel One and Motel Two for. If you can lock that in to when a governor's order opens things up and hotel owners are going to start charging more, I would, I guess my point is, if you feel strongly enough that we need to move people out of a congregate setting for public health reasons, I would encourage you to not let go of Hotel Aspen. It is, it's a good deal if you are utilizing all of it. It's not if you're not using it. But just to let you know comparatively to how that looks for us, I have been grateful to have somewhere to send folks. I think that, you know, we would have been in a whole different kind of world of hurt if we had gotten that news two days ago, which, let me just say, at, at 11:00 AM, we only had seven results and five of them were positive. And so talk about soul crushing. That was the moment where it was like, what are we going to do? And I was grateful to have somewhere to send these folks and be able to concentrate on what we were doing at that time. So, you know, I guess I, I think that it's probably not going to be enough space for what we need. I have concerns about the number of people we are going to see coming to our community if, if there is word, word out there that if you try to come to Flagstaff Shelter Services, you can get a hotel room. So I, I would, you know, put that out there as a caution to the group. But I have been grateful to have somewhere to send. And if Hotel Aspen does close, I, I feel confident that I'll just need, we'll just need to move in another direction and find more hotel rooms somewhere else. So I know that doesn't help with your decision, but in terms of, I can't continue to operate and have my staff becoming ill and do everything we're going to do without having somewhere to send folks at least that are positive. So I don't know if that helps or.
Yeah, I think it does. And so, and so, so very clearly, because I just, I just want to be clear, because obviously the board is going to have some deliberations afterwards. And so I just want to make sure that, so you would, would you, do, would you like some assistance in terms of being able to provide, like triaging folks and being able to provide a place for people to go into a hotel setting in order to then go in and, and do what you need to do with the, with the building to sanitize and do all of that? Is that, is that something that you're interested in?
Yes, I, I don't know that it has to be done. I think one of the things that we talked about this afternoon or before this meeting, Dr. Mujin had some interesting ideas about cleaning, actually take, and did it need to be something that looked like moving people to another hotel, that kind of thing? I do think that something needs to be done at the shelter. I have very significant concerns about, you know, sending people in there to sleep and to work every day and knowing that, you know, we can't by law keep them there and that they are going back out into the community and working jobs that are, put them behind a cash register and put them deliver your food at night. So I, I think it's important to recognize that these are members of our community that are providing other services beyond, you know, sleeping somewhere at night. And I think it's a, it's definitely a public health response to say, we need to be cleaning. If we can get them somewhere separately, great. I have some concerns about whether or not we can make that work at Hotel Aspen, just simply because of the numbers and the location and that sort of stuff. But I, yes, something needs to be done.
Okay. Let's see, I see that Dr. Mujin probably wants to comment.
I was just going to add that we, we were talking about ways of rapidly sterilizing, maybe the shelter with some of the machines that we have and use to sterilize our rooms, operating rooms, et cetera, bathrooms, that we could loan or transport if needed and utilize those to help out.
Okay. Supervisor Babbitt, can I get, I want to get back to you and then want to get over to Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Babbitt, you just need to unmute?
Okay, thanks, thanks. So I just wanted to ask, you know, when we talked on this last week about looking at a utilization model that worked, obviously, this part of the conversation was not embedded in that conversation. We did subsequently find out that money for real property acquisition can be utilized and accessed. And I wanted to ask Joanne, you know, if you look at the short-term picture, which is how do we triage this spike at a congregate shelter? But how do we also keep our opportunities open for long-term acquisition opportunities that may serve a whole variety of long-term community needs, such as workforce housing, such as SMI housing, such as, you know, shelter opportunities? Did you talk with General McGuire, either Supervisor Ryan or Joanne, in any setting about real property acquisition, you know, after the immediacy of this conversation occurs?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Babbitt, we did not specifically talk about real property acquisition. I know we're prepared to discuss that today. And I know Eric has done some analysis with the CARES Act that there is funding available for real property acquisition. That's my understanding through the CARES Act. What we're talking about for the reimbursement for the three months of Hotel Aspen, that that will likely come from the FEMA Public Assistance Fund. So that's, that's a different pot of money. But the CARES Act funding for real property acquisition is a different pot of money. But Eric can clarify that if, if I'm incorrect.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Parks, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This question is also for Joanne. I, okay, the state has offered to pick up at least 75% of the cost of this hotel. My question is, for how long? Are we, if we're looking at six months to occupy something like, like this facility or even longer, is the state willing to pick that up? And are they willing to try to provide us with the other 25% as well if we, if we have to utilize the facility for a long term? And with that, are we, would we be able to apply whatever those funds would, would be coming to us to buying, buying a facility, as Supervisor Babbitt suggested?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Parks, so the, the way that the reimbursable expenses, so we've submitted those through, through DEMA. And Marie can, can also jump in on this as well, for the, the three months that we have been using Hotel Aspen. And those still need to be qualifying expenses. So DEMA needs to review those, work with FEMA. So as Marie mentioned earlier, we still likely have, you know, a week to two weeks of word back from DEMA on those expenses, correct, Marie?
Yeah, thank you so much. That is correct. We're hoping for a week, but it very well could be two weeks. And, you know, Supervisor Parks, I appreciate the question. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the email that I forwarded to all board members yesterday, but it was a cover letter pass through from DEMA to FEMA. And the cover letter was incredibly supportive of our isolation and quarantine operations. And it requested support for those operations in full from, from DEMA to FEMA. So, you know, while that's not a direct answer from the federal government, it looks great and is incredibly helpful that our, our state, DEMA, is supporting all of our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peoples. But I, my question was about the length of time that they would be willing to, to fund us for this project.
Yeah, that's a great question, Supervisor Parks. There was not an indication of a length of time, but I can share with you, as can those that were able to meet with the general yesterday. What he continued to impress upon is that their goal is to see that, see operations and really keeping our area safe. Because again, he did say that the state was looking at Northern Arizona, specifically Coquenaux County as a hotspot because of our increased testing numbers and that they were looking at maintaining these operations through November. So while that's not guarantee of funding, it is at least through several months that they recognize we're going to continue to need assistance.
And I would just say that he did specifically say funding should not be an issue. And I know that I'm going to ask Matt to also, Supervisor Ryan, to, to also confirm what he heard. But it was very clear to me, and, and this is at the meeting at Hotel Aspen, and I know that the mayor spoke to this as well, that he did say funding should not be an issue. Like you should not be letting this property go because of funding. That is not an issue that I want you to worry about. Funding should not be an issue. And that's when he said, we'll get you the 75% immediately. We'll work on getting you the 25%. And so Supervisor Ryan, do you want to weigh in on that? Because he did, again, reiterate that on, okay, Mayor, I'll get you, yeah. But and then I want Supervisor Ryan to reiterate also at the EOC what he, what he heard. Again, because we were able to, I mean, obviously at Hotel Aspen, we were all standing in a circle and we were to have, we had a, a very light briefing and just an exchange, a conversation. And then at the EOC, we were able to have more of a formal briefing and any more of a sit-down conversation and get like all of our questions answered. And so, so Mayor, why don't you go ahead? Because I know you were there at the, the, the first meeting. And then I want Supervisor Ryan also just to reiterate what he heard.
So, you know, we talked to the general very directly about money. And Supervisor Chair, Chair Archuleta said that the Board of Supervisors had met and had decided to close the facility because it was a cash flow issue and because of the expense. The general was very clear and said that you should not be making public health decisions based off of the cost of the facility, because the facility was one that was needed. And that's when we went into the conversation about the reimbursement. And that's when we're like, oh, you can get reimbursed 75% of it now and the other 25% this way. There's a whole conversation about it. But he was crystal clear that the decision to keep Hotel Aspen open should not be one that's based off of the financial, based off of financial model.
And one of the things that I did tell him was that, I mean, obviously, you know, we had initially felt up until the last 48 hours that we have felt that the property is just too big and that it's a very large footprint and thus the overhead is very, it is, it is costly. And, but then obviously, in the past 48 hours, things have changed. We have, you know, we've seen our numbers increase. And he was very concerned about that. He had heard about the increase of numbers amongst our housing insecure population. He also is very knowledgeable of the increase of, of COVID positive people, you know, within Coquenaux County on the, on the Navajo Nation and also understands the implications for the Flagstaff Medical Center. And I did tell him, I mean, we are looking at, we're looking at other options, smaller properties. I mean, termination of the contract doesn't mean that we don't think that this is valuable or that it's not needed in the community. And I wanted to ensure, to assure him that that is not at all the board's thought or intention. It was rather the, the property itself possibly being too big because we weren't utilizing, you know, as many rooms as we anticipated. But we also understand that, again, in the last 48 hours, things have changed. And he said, yes, it has. And that's when he went into the whole thing about, you know, there is a, we're highly concerned, there is a public health concern here. You know, we feel like you are going to need this larger property. Your numbers are showing that. And that's. Your numbers are showing that. And that's when he went into money should not be a consideration of your decision. We will, we will provide that. Supervisor Ryan, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Parks, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, the FEMA money that, that we eventually received from the Schultz fire took about three years. Are we going to have to look at a long term, a long term time of not having the reimbursement for this hotel? Or is it going to occur right away? Does the general have?
Yes, he, sure. Well, let me, let me answer that if I may. And I understand exactly where you're coming from. And as you know, like with the Schultz fire and flooding and with other disasters that we've had, it has taken as much as three years to be reimbursed. And, you know, a year to three years. But on the outs, we have seen with Schultz, it's taken up to three for FEMA reimbursement. So that is why I did tell him, obviously, we're concerned about a cash flow problem. And then that's when he and Mr. Cox, the Director of DEMA, said, you know, there is a way to put in a request under emergency for immediate reimbursement. So he told us how to do that. And later in the EOC with the managers there, he, again, was very explicit about how to go about obtaining that, the, the 75% immediately. And so Dr. Peoples has verified that we are, we have submitted that paperwork and that that will be under review, I believe she said, on Monday. And so Dr. Peoples, if I misspoke on any of that, please, please correct me so that we can have the information.
Thank you, Chair Archuleta. So the portal opens officially on Monday. We are ahead of the game by having already submitted, which was due to the general's visit. And I don't know that ours will be reviewed on Monday, but it is there. DEMA has acknowledged receipt of it. And so we're hoping that we will have a response within a week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor, yes, Vice Chair Fowler, if you don't mind, I was just going to call on Supervisor Ryan just to add anything to this particular discussion since he also met with the general. And then I will call on you, okay, for questions. Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You pretty much expressed most of the conversation that occurred. There are two different dynamics. We all have been getting assurances from the general that if money became an issue, to make sure that we speak to him. It, it also was captured on, here's an expedited way of applying for and should help us get expedited return on that 75%. The 25% was an area that they are working on. And so we're getting positive feedback that we have a potential of potentially retrieving that. And then also noted was that there are additional monies that are coming through the CARES Act that they might look at and consider. So what we're seeing here is we're getting reassurances that they will work with us to make sure, or help us make sure that if money became an issue, they will be working together with us. And so we've initiated using the processes for what we need to do with that. Until we get our applications in and approved, you always have that no guarantee. However, everything is moving in the direction that it looks like it should come through. And we have additional support or potential support for what we're, we can do with this.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Vice Chair Fowler?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Marie. So it sounds like there is an increase in, on Navajo, not Navajo, but in, in Flagstaff. And someone turn my camera on to wave at everybody. And it sounds like it is, you know, in the past, you have explained that when you test individuals, you go back to their home address. So the increase in the testing of this homeless population, then that means that their, their, their numbers go back to those zip codes where they are actually from. And also the increase in Flagstaff numbers, they're actually from the Flagstaff zip code. Is that right?
So if I'm understanding your question, Vice Chair, so in terms of our unsheltered population, the majority of them have opted to give their address as the shelter address. If we can do trace backs with those individuals to other more recent homes that they have left and have been in contact with those individuals and perhaps having had exposures, then we're doing the disease investigation that would lead us down that path. But just in terms of pure reporting, typically the address is the shelter that they're residing in. Thank you.
So, so just a follow up, the increase in Flagstaff numbers is from the shelter?
As of this week, not all of them. We've had a couple of others, but yes, the cluster and spike that we're seeing is shelter related. And not just this particular shelter. We've done some testing and have had some positives in some other shelters as well. And this population does tend to go back and forth from some, from shelter to shelter. But this is definitely a Flagstaff increase in a Flagstaff cluster.
Okay, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? And this could be for, of course, for anyone who has participated, any questions from the board? For our partners or for our staff? Okay, I'm hearing none. So any other information or perspectives that our partners would like to provide? Mayor Evans, Dr. Nuland, Dr. Mujin, Ms. Altenbach?
Not here.
I'm good. Thank you for the opportunity.
Um, I don't have anything else. I'm just trying to figure out when are we going to know the status on Hotel Aspen as well as what, what's going to happen?
What's going to happen with the, what's going to happen with Hotel Aspen? I mean, I imagine that there will be some direction today, this afternoon, and then, but in terms of what's going to happen, in terms of what assistance Flagstaff Shelter Services needs, is that correct as well?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think that's a opportunity again for, for Ms. Altenbach to be able to communicate that. And certainly Chair of the Board of Flagstaff Shelter Services, Dr. Nuland. And then also for County Manager, I'd see that County Manager Jane probably wants to say something. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to County Manager Jane.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and Mayor and all of you. So as Ross has stated, some of her thoughts and perspective here, and so thank you, Ross. Out of the meeting that we had yesterday and then again today at noon has been referenced. And I want to say thank you to Dr. Nuland for, for arranging that conversation so that we can have this community wide conversation about a community wide response to a community wide public health issue. So we agreed that we will continue this conversation at a date to be set next week. But in the meantime, I will be following up with, with Ross to make sure that we are continuing to stay on the same page and that we are doing what we can. As mentioned earlier, Dr. Mujin, thank you, Dr. Mujin and FMC for offering to send some staff over to look at how that, that facility is sterilized. I don't think it's a matter of it having to close, just to close the loop on that issue. I think it's a matter simply of being able to vacate it for a period of time during the day to be able to ensure that it's, it's sterilized appropriately. And thank you to FMC for helping with that. Our HSS team will be involved in that conversation as well. But we will make sure that we stay connected to Ross and Flagstaff Shelter to be sure that their needs are being met and we're doing what we can as a county to partner with, with them.
I guess I just want to follow up and just, and just state very clearly that I appreciate all of that. We just heard Dr. Peoples saying that there's been a spike in cases at the shelter as well as the other shelter. And that those are part of the, that is part of the reason why we're seeing an increase here in the city. I think that people who are unsheltered are extremely important and valuable human beings. And that we need to do what we can to minimize their exposure to COVID and to, and to make sure that they recover from COVID. And so in understanding that, you know, this conversation is coming to an end and that it's going to continue next week, I think that's great. And I'm excited that it's going to continue. I want to say that over the weekend, I hope that individuals are not continuing to be exposed to COVID so that next week they end up as another statistic and up on a chart and possibly not here at some point. So whatever we are going to do as a community to address this, it needs to get addressed and it needs to get addressed in, in rapid session. And so if Hotel Aspen is not the appropriate place, then we need to figure out where the appropriate place is. I understand that we are saying that it might be just a point of removing people for the day and scrubbing the shelter or cleaning it, you know? And hopefully that's the case. But so far that has not been the case. Because one of the things I did hear Ross say is that they have been doing everything that they possibly can. And they still have cases. And not only do they have cases, but the individuals that work there have cases. So I just want to make sure that that is heard and overstayed. Thank you.
Dr. Nolan, did you have something you wanted to add? And then I do want to provide a response.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair Archuleta. Mayor Evans, I want to thank you for your compassion for the unsheltered population and, and your genuine personal concern for their health and welfare and that of the staff who support all of the shelters in town, whether it's the Rescue Mission or Flagstaff Shelter. You know, I think one of the challenges we have here in Arizona is we're number 51 out of the, the states, the United States, if we include Washington DC as a state in terms of testing. And, and I think one of the really distinct challenges of COVID-19 is so many people have relatively mild symptoms, stuff that you wouldn't even identify as, as, as a signifier of illness. So you can have lots of asymptomatic people shedding virus. We knew that the, that the folks at Flag Shelter were higher risk simply because of their population. And, and I can't say that the proportion would be as high if we were to do mass screening elsewhere. But we're limited by the number of tests available and the capacity to test. So I would put that in a, in a context. I'm, I'm equally concerned about the, the population at Flag Shelter, the Rescue Mission and so forth. And we're committed to finding a safe, reasonable pathway to protect, protect people and protect the community. And that was part of my intention in bringing together a very small group of people that could just aggressively problem solve.
And, and Dr. Nolan, just so we can be clear, because I, I feel, I do feel compelled to answer, I mean, all of us, all of us on this call right now, all of the presenters, all of the entire board, the mayor, I mean, we are all concerned about our unsheltered population, right? I mean, there's not one person in here that's, that's not concerned. There's, we all are concerned about that. We're all concerned about, you know, our unsheltered community of contracting COVID, just like our entire community. We're concerned about every single person. And we understand the, you know, the, the fact that everybody wants to provide their assistance. At the same time, it's, you know, you and your board and Flagstaff Shelter Services and our other shelters that really need to determine what is the best course of action for you. And you have convened these two meetings where there's been really, you know, great candid and discussion about how to go about that. And, I mean, the county stands by, ready to offer our assistance. I mean, obviously, there is a resource there in Hotel Aspen. And, you know, we want to assist in any way we can, but we, I also feel like you and Ms. Altenbach know what's going to work best for you and for Flagstaff Shelter Services. And so maybe if you could just, you know, so that it's just clear, you know, just tell us a little bit about, you know, where are we at now? I mean, we want to identify solutions and help you identify solutions. And at the same time, I just want to hear directly what's going to be right for you.
So for that answer, I'll defer to Ross, simply because she's got the operational experience on the ground. And, and we have discussed this as a board, but if it's okay, I'll defer that answer to Ross Altenbach.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Whatever, and leave it all on. I, I don't think that we, I would say the comforting news is that I don't believe that the other shelters are taking new clients. So I don't think, I think as far as I've heard that our agency is the only agency that's still taking on new people. So I think we can take some comfort in that the Rescue Mission, if they're getting tested, that they might be able to have some, a little bit of control there. You know, I really want to see people go into motel, a motel setting. I don't know how long and I don't know what it looks like. I can say that has been our intention all along, that we want to see that happen. Because you can't shelter in place in, in, in a congregate location. And I think the challenge of that then becomes, I don't, I don't know that Hotel Aspen is the best location for that. I can't say that for certain. I think there's a lot of positives to it. And I think there's a lot of things that could, could be significant challenges. I think you're also talking about a significant number of people that have a lot of challenges and aren't, you know, we're talking about seriously mentally ill. And so, you know, these are folks that are going to have a hard time in any setting following what they need to do. And so I think that's just a caveat to think through that, you know, if we are putting a lot of these people into a location that you have a mix of positives and negatives, especially if you've got some elderly, more vulnerable people over there, I just think that technically speaking, there's a lot to talk through. And I don't know that, this isn't the forum for that, I understand. But I guess my, my gut says the right thing to do is to continue to try to get people out. And I don't know that that's at Hotel Aspen, and I can't say for certain where that is. But that would be our intention regardless of whether or not those rooms are available at Hotel Aspen.
Got it. Yeah. And one of the things that I heard you say earlier that I did want to follow up is just the, you know, the, the ability for people to connect. And it sounds like, you know, the day programming and having activities is really, you know, it really critical. Which, you know, we do not have at Hotel Aspen. We don't have the day programming component. And so I, I do hear, you know, what you're saying in terms of, you know, is Hotel Aspen the best place? I mean, I know we do have different, there are different buildings, you know, at Hotel Aspen where there could be different types of, of programming or opportunities for people in different buildings. But, you know, it is on the same footprint, of course, too. And so obviously, there'd have to be a lot of discussion. And you're right, this is not the, the forum for that. There certainly could be a convening of the, the smaller group to, to think that through. But really appreciate you clearly articulating, you know, what the needs are. And again, I mean, we, we stand ready to assist and certainly can, we'll leave it up to, you know, our County Manager and our Deputy County Managers and you and the group that, the group that Dr. Nolan had convened to talk about, you know, what might be, what might be the opportunities. Okay, thank you very much. All right, are there any further questions from the board? Because I just want to make sure we get all of our questions and get all the information that you need before we determine if we need to go into executive session.
That is, Chair. Chair Fowler, yes, go ahead.
This is not a question, but I thought I just
This is not a question, but I thought I'd just inform every, everyone that is, that is, that's on the call, that we are, since we're talking about Navajo Nation and, you know, an increase coming in, we are from our county, we are working with Navajo Nation, we're working, currently working to help assist I, Indian, the Navajo area Indian Health Services and other Navajo community, helping them to provide service in these Navajo communities. So Coconino County has become the, we've, we've, we are really reaching out throughout northern Arizona. And I think it's just because of just the, the way that our county team has set services here. And so we're, we're really become the place to come to for some answers and assistance and whether it's through the networking or however else that we can do it. So just want to let you know that we are not just concentrating in the county, just within Coconino County only, but it's across northern Arizona. Of course, we're working with all the communities within our counties, but it's, it's really has, we've really should, should, reached out as well, being asked to help out in different places in different ways. So just want to let you all know that, since we're talking about the, just the services that are needed. It's a great challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Fowler. And, you know, I did have just one, I'm sorry, Ms. Altenbaugh, I just, I just thought of one other question and that is that we were talking about funding and then just anything that we can do to help. And I know that looks like Supervisor Babbitt has a question as well. So there was discussions with the, with the state when the governor was having, the governor's office was having regular phone calls. We had inquired about funding for shelters for housing insecure and they said that there was going to be some funds that were supposed to be coming from the state specifically for homeless shelters. Do you know the status of that and if you're eligible for any of those funds?
I do know, oh wow, I know about, I, I know where we are with some of it. So the Arizona Department of Housing is sort of, the way that we heard that it was shifting or that it was breaking out was that the Arizona Department of Housing would handle a portion of it, the Department of Economic Security would handle a portion of it, and then, you know, there would be funding potentially coming through the Community Development Block Grant. I know that the Community Development Block Grant component for, that we utilize at the shelter comes through the City of Flagstaff and I believe that that, those recommendations are coming to the city council next week, that I, I think that we are included in, I don't know at what level, but I, I think that there will be funding to provide some motailing and staffing of, of our services. I also know that we have received a contract for about $135,000 from the Arizona Department of Housing for shelter operations during this time. The emergency solutions grant through Department of Economic Security, I believe we are included in that, but we have not been, that, that, that money won't start until July and we don't even, we have no idea what that looks like. So again, we're already a recipient of those funds annually in their regular pot, so I don't anticipate it being an issue that we're in, in that funding, but I don't know what it looks like and I, I, and I know it won't start till July.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Babbitt?
Yeah, I just wanted to, as we're winding this phase up, just want to just absolutely recognize the amazing work that, that Shelter Services, North Country, and as your position on, as a chair, Dr. Mujin, you know, we had the opportunity to talk the other day and just so you know, I, I checked the critical care numbers again this morning, I was glad to see them pegged down a little bit. And, and then Coral and the, and the city, you know, it is so important that this box is being built with all the players in the room who are, are talking and communicating and enunciating needs and sharing perspectives. When that doesn't happen and we silo is when we don't do as good work as we could. And, and so, you know, I think it, it is, you know, and Supervisor Ryan, I just want to, your work over decades with the Army National Guard that gets to have some of those relationships is just critical because this, you know, north of $700,000 we've spent in the last six weeks, you know, is a cash flow issue and having that clarity that that is, and we hope we have follow-up and firmness in that, is absolutely critical. If you play this tape forward for the next 10 months to 12 months to there is a theoretical vaccine out here, we are going to be expending, you know, probably three to four million dollars just on this piece. And we should be doing that with not only a, a short-term triage perspective, but a long-term opportunity perspective. And so, you know, I just so appreciate the work you're doing, the testing you've done. We're going to be bringing a CI through Amanda and getting more testing and PPE for vulnerable populations that you're doing. And I just want to thank you for just playing such a critical role. I, I'm glad you're in this conversation and I'm glad you're on this call and just really appreciate the work you're doing and looking forward to, to making sure that box continues to be strong and resilient. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, and just before we move on, I'm going to ask our county manager Jimmy Jane also to provide some final comments, but I did, I did want to make sure that Deputy County Manager Keen, I did want her to just wrap up the final conversation about this rapid reimbursement. It is brand new and so could you speak to that, please? Joanne? Oh, and just unmute. There you go.
I apologize, I'm having some technology issues today, Madam Chair. I, what I just wanted to clarify, and this goes back to the earlier question from Supervisor Parks, is that this express pay, I believe that they're calling it, it actually will be announced on Monday. So it's a, it's a new option that has never been available to get those reimbursements to the entities right away. So, you know, I think it's something that, that came up yesterday that we had never heard about before and then we've been able to, to chase that down over the last 24 hours. I, I will tell you that I, we were on the manager's call this morning through CSA and they just received word about it as well. So I did want to clarify that, that it's a new option that's going to be available to, to help with those upfront costs.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that. County Manager Jane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just offer some final comments to say that partnership works and I think this conversation is a prime example echoing Supervisor Babbitt's comments that we are, make sure we're on the same page because we're serving the same people regardless of the jurisdictions that we come from, that we're, we're in this together to serve the public health of the Flagstaff area and the entire county. And I just want to say, Madam Chair, thank you again to Dr. Nolan for not only facilitating some conversations that are happening, will continue next week, but the partnership of North Country, including what you're doing up even in the Grand Canyon, Tucson area. Thank you to Ross Altenbaugh, Ross with Flagstaff Shelter Services. Ross, thank you for everything that you are doing. I know this is, as you and I chatted, I think last night about, you know, your, the services that you deliver on a, on a, on a, on a normal day are complicated and this is even more complicated. And I hope you know that we are here to support you and to work with you to help you be successful to serve our housing insecure population. And Dr. Mujin, thank you for your continued voice in this conversation. Been a lot of, been a lot of conversations that you have been in the last couple of weeks and I just want to say thank you to, to you and the partnership of FMC for what you're doing to help in this public health effort. So Madam Chair, I just thank you for this, this conversation from a staff perspective. It's really helpful to be able to hear the perspectives and to give us some direction moving forward. And at this point, you know, if, if we're, when we're finished here, you could, we would potentially consider going into an executive session. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much and thank you so much for, Jimmy, for recognizing our partners. And I also, before we go into executive session, I do want to thank Mayor Evans and I do want to just publicly thank her and the City of Flagstaff for the money that they put in for the, this year's budget for eviction prevention. And then also I know that from their CDBG funding, they also have some funding that they're putting in. And so Mayor, just, if you would just, for the entire board, just, if you would just let us know, because I think that's a wonderful partnership with the city in terms of the funding that the City of Flagstaff is putting in, I would like to give you an opportunity just to, to tell us about that before we go into executive session as well, because it's all, it's all comprehensive, right? We're all trying to assist our community a number of different ways.
And, and work together definitely in partnership. And so the City of Flagstaff, we finished our budget retreat, I think it's been two weeks ago now, and in our budget retreat, we set aside funding specifically for rental eviction prevention. And so that will be money that the city has set aside to go to the county specifically for that program. And also there's been talk about CDBG funding here. Again, I know that the city is receiving COVID-19 CDBG funding that is to be used specifically for housing. I believe Ross mentioned that there has been a community group that has talked about the allocation of that. I do believe that the recommendation will come back for money for sheltering our unsheltered population as well as helping to assist with rental, rental evictions again. And so the city is here as in partnership and working together. I believe this is the first meeting that we have been had, we, I have had the opportunity to have such a comprehensive conversation about Hotel Aspen. I would say that moving forward in order for us to really make sure that we maximize our partnerships, meetings like this would definitely be necessary and I look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you Mayor, thank you to all of our partners. We appreciate your time and I know it went a little bit longer or a lot longer perhaps than we all thought, but I think the discussion was, you know, very much needed, very productive and certainly will help the board as we make our decisions, will definitely inform our discussions. So with that, members of the board, well, let me just ask this to our, of our county attorney, Rose, is it your advice that we go into executive session?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and this would be an executive session to discuss contracts and real property, correct?
I believe it's primarily for the, the discussion of the contracts related to Aspen Hotel, Hotel Aspen.
Excellent, good, I just want to be very specific, so I appreciate that. Is there a motion to do so, to, to move into executive session?
So moved, Matt Ryan.
Second, Jim Parks.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, then we are going to go into executive session. There is a different number that we will call to go into executive session. And so Eric, would you like to make that announce, make that announcement in terms of where we can find that? Is it just in our emails?
Yes, Supervisors, the Teams meeting for executive session is in your calendar, it was sent by Lindsay, so you'll see it at about the 2:15 mark. There's a link there to a Teams meeting or a phone number. I'll put this meeting in recess pending any return here on the Zoom, so.
Okay, great, so we are recessing out of our meeting today into executive session. Thank you. Hello?
Hello.
Oh, hi, okay, great.
Madam Chair, we are all here when you are ready.
Okay, thank you so much, I'm sorry, I was having a little bit of a technical difficulty, but I am back. And so this is the, we went into a re-
And so this is the, we went into recess to, actually went into executive session. We are now out of executive session. We had recessed our earlier special meeting of the Board of Supervisors to be able to go into executive session and have a discussion. And so I just wanted to open it up. And County Manager Jane, do you have any comments before I take over the meeting and make a statement by the Board of Supervisors?
Madam Chair, I would just say that I believe the, the direction is clear and look forward to, to your statement. I just want to say thank you again to the board and to staff for preparing for today and for the clear direction. And you have our commitment, as stated by, by DCM Adriani, that we are going to keep our foot on the gas pedal moving forward and keep you all informed of what's happening and do our best to continue to find the right solutions, right-sized solutions for the right time. Again, dealing with this pandemic moving forward. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank you and the deputy county managers. And specifically, also want to thank Dr. Peoples as the Incident Commander at the EOC for all the work you put into this work session. And I do want to tell you that the Board of Supervisors has determined that not exercising a 30-day notice of termination for Hotel Aspen is in the best interest of the community at this time. Due to the increase in COVID-19 cases, specifically in the congregate shelter setting at Flagstaff Shelter Services, it's important for the county to continue to utilize the facility to assist in managing this concerning trend. We look forward to continuing to work with the Arizona Department of Emergency Management on reimbursement options for this cost that has been incurred directly by Coconino County. We want to thank, of course, our community partners, including the City of Flagstaff, Flagstaff Shelter Services, North Country Healthcare and Northern Arizona Healthcare for working with the county during this challenging time in our community. And with that, I'd be happy to open it up to the board for any additional comments. Otherwise, we will adjourn this meeting.
Madam Chair, if I may, just because we're in open session, I would say that I do support the direction as just stated.
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Fowler. I'd like to just thank everyone that joined us today on this very important issue. And I do support it as well.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure the others do as well. So, thank you. Well, that is, that is the end of our meeting for this afternoon. I appreciate everyone for the thoughtful consideration. Appreciate everyone who presented to the board this afternoon. And don't forget our Testing Blitz tomorrow, which will be held at our Health and Human Services Building on King Street. Everyone is welcome to come and get tested. You do not need to have a doctor's note to get tested. The Testing Blitz again is tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at our Health and Human Services Building on King Street. You can walk up, you can get, we, but you can bicycle to the, to the Testing Blitz. You can drive to the Testing Blitz. We do ask again that you wear some type of covering, whether that be a mask or a scarf, just to be safe and keep everybody safe and to be considerate of one another. Okay, thank you very much and have a great weekend. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.